Masters in social work, we acknowledge that. They have a master's degree and pay them as such. But I think again, that's the devilish sort, you know?
I have one comment and then a question. The comment is a comment to kind of ahead of this. That not only do we need that information before the next semester starts, but in the summer months, when kids are off school, that's a huge gap between the end of school where they've had that concentrated one-on-one time with the counselor. And then they have a two or three month gap where they have no contact. And I hear a lot from parents that, you know, we could call in school, we can't get ahold of anybody, there's nobody to reach out to. So the recommendation has been made to me several times that it would be helpful if even if we had one individual at district level that could answer, you know, some basic questions that at least can be more in the right direction. My question is, based on the mentors for college programs who started in the North Building, it's doing well there. It's starting to creep into some of the other buildings. Do you see that as something that could really turn it to an advantage with the school counselors in the other buildings and helping take away some of the burden that they face trying to try to juggle being a college career counselor and being a social emotional counselor at the same time?
Well, so I'm biased because I helped start that program when I was a counselor at North High. So yes, I think it's a wonderful program. And I think it connects on a different level with parents and students. So it's meant to be a parent-to-parent mentor thing as well as, hey, we've been through this process. We know what's going on with your students. So I think it helps and certainly should grow. Do I think it ever should replace the professionals that we have in place to do that work? No. So yes, it's a great help and definitely, I think, helpful. And I saw so many students get so much more attention because of that program. And I was proud to collaborate with the people who volunteered their time to do it. And I also just, it's a really great way to get our community involved in Parkway. And if people want to help, let's take their help. But it's still important to have a counselor with a master's degree in school counseling onboard with that process.
Erin, how does the curriculum delivery system work in the high schools? You've got some counselors that are ALBA and some that are by grade level. And when does the counselor have an opportunity to go into a classroom? Which classroom? And how do they know they're a teacher's student?
Right, okay. So actually largely, they will just, as the five of them or six of them say, okay, we're going into the social studies classrooms, the sophomore world history classes. I've got it all set up. They don't necessarily meet with their own kids when they're doing curriculum. So they split it up, they tag team it, they all meet. Every single student gets met with by a counselor in the curriculum, but it is not necessarily their person.
I have a statement for our daughter and her colleges for a counselor career as a lunch with camps. And I think a little bit of this can just happen and how much of the paths are there?
Nancy, we would.
Yeah. And starting to develop at the elementary school level, interested in relationship, you know, a trusted adult relationship. And so I just appreciate when you come and do things like that. And it's starting to talk about.
Me too. It's all about relationships. Thank you.
The social organization for the standard, I think, for the last couple of years. So we've got, Charlie J. has advocated certainly that need. And you know, it's a matter of we, not for lots of, we've added, we've added one.
We've added one.
Add one, right. So I mean, we're working for, kind of, those are concerned about it because obviously there are more and more demands on kind of our customers, which a social worker is our assistant. So I want to assure people that we are watching that. And we know that somebody's struggling. I have different types of models to address.
And that was an echo of those requests as well. So you can hear it from multiple people.
I have a question. Can you just talk about the message in here is maybe more transferred for social workers? Has that been considered in pretty much of our?
For my own personal budget, I do not have a budget large enough to support the, another person being hired. So my budget isn't large enough to even pay one more person.
I can answer that basically. We have a staffing model that allows us to say, you know, we have potential staffs, a staff, not a social worker staff that we're going to kind of put on hold that we may need for additional classrooms. And with some growth in the area, what we do is if we don't use all that, that happened, I think, by adding a counselor a year ago, we didn't use all that supply. And so late in the summer, not for lots of, or we're not BJ and they're hiring a social worker. But we, as you'll hear from Patty, we've got some limits on what we do in terms of growth in staff. Your kind of budget.
And we understand that. These are kind of pie and sky requests. If we could have, you know, what we want, we're also completely willing to figure out within existing structures what can be optimal and efficient. So we're serving our students the best. And I think when it comes down to it, that's just really what we're hoping to do. I've exceeded my minute thirty seconds. Thank you all very much.
Hey, fifteen point zero work session, fifteen point zero budget work. This is the moment we've all been waiting for. And remember, come on down. I'll adjust the microphone just a little bit. So if you want, we could wrap this up in a minute thirty seconds, but I think we might need a little bit more time. Good evening, President Feldman. Congratulations, Vice President Albon, members of the Board of Education. Tonight, both Brian and Will, our Director of Finance and myself, will give you a preview of what will be contained in your budget book. That'll be presented for your approval and consideration in June. But we hope to have the entire book in your possession by the end of May. So thanks, we have some time to actually go through the about hundred-page document and ask any kind of questions you have whatsoever. And also, as we're going through the data tonight, please feel free to ask any questions that come to your mind. And if we don't know the answer right off the top of our head, we will get back to you. So essentially, since our time together in December where we presented the budget assumptions, we've gone through many things. So we have revisited the revenues and updated that with our latest information. We've received in the program budgets and the billing budgets from our directors, our coordinators, and our principals. We have also concluded our teacher negotiations. So with a three-year contract, that helps with our budget planning because it helps to secure our largest expenditure, which is our salaries. Tonight, we will go through the major components of our revenue. So as you know, our largest revenue source is our local tax revenue. So we'll go into that pretty in-depth. We'll also visit some of the other revenues and their impacts. Now we'll go into the operating expenditures. So salaries, benefits, enrollment, staffing projections, and the like. And of course, we will always end with that fund balance. So that has been a very crucial component for ours. One of our major goals is to grow that fund balance in order to have the future where we could actually invest over a nine, more than a nine-month period. So in that twelve-month or so category and eliminate our need for borrowing of the tax anticipation notes that we currently need to do. So just to briefly go through the timeline, in December, of course, we brought the budget assumptions to you. We also, at that point in time, gave budget targets to our program managers and to our principals. In January, you approved the budget assumptions. And of course, we started our negotiations with our teacher group. In February and March, we received in all of their budget data. We compiled it, made sure that they met the targets. If the targets were in variance, we reviewed the data and then essentially approved the additional expenditures or not. On a constant note, we were looking at the staffing changes, the enrollment projections, and making sure that our staffing numbers were in line. Of course, this evening, we bring to you the preview of the budget book. And then in, on the June fourteenth meeting, I'm sorry, you will have the ability to consider the approval of our budget for next year. So one of the components of our property tax is the collection rate. So that's the percentage of taxes we receive versus the amount that we assess. As you can see, that's been very volatile in the last few years. And that's mainly due to our protested tax settlements. To date, there's been over ten million in protested tax settlement paybacks. And this process is continuing. Last year, we had twenty-six million dollars in taxes that were paid in protest. This year, as you know, from our previous board meeting, that number has escalated to thirty million. So that is not a problem that is going away anytime soon. So we just have to be very conscientious of it and have our pulse on it. With any change in the collection rate, about a quarter of a percent, actually equates to about four hundred thousand dollars in our operating funds. So it does have a material impact on our financial statements. Another component is the Consumer Price Index. So based on the Hancock Amendment in the state of Missouri, our local revenues of same property cannot grow any faster than our Consumer Price Index. So even, like this year, our assessment grew by, with preliminary numbers, grew by almost eleven percent. But our revenue will not grow by that eleven percent. It'll be capped at the Consumer Price Index. When we first had the assumptions for you, we assumed that the amount would be about one point five percent. The actual Consumer Price Index, we're setting our tax rate from seventeen eighteen school year, will be two point one percent. Now, you may ask, why is that at two percent on there? We have two property categories that we actually do not get growth percentage on, and that's our agricultural. This year, our numbers are about level with last year, and that's a very small component of our total property. And the other component is our personal property. Any changes in personal property that's an increase all go to our new construction. So then that leads us to our new construction numbers. When we originally brought this to you with our assumptions in December, we actually estimated twenty million in new construction for next year. Our preliminary numbers from St. Louis County have reached twenty-eight million for this upcoming year. The final amounts on that, though, will not be ready until July first. So we don't even have a breakdown based on properties yet from St. Louis County. And why is that material for us to know which properties are included? We have several properties that are tax-aided, so under either a TIF or a Chapter one hundred or a Chapter three fifty-three. So we receive some partial income from some of those. And it's called pilots, or payment in lieu of taxes. So we want to ensure in our budget that we haven't under-allocated or double-allocated that revenue. So it's really important for us to ensure that we know the new construction by property. So when we're doing the revised budget in the fall, we'll have that additional information and most likely make some adjustments to our revenue based on that. So some of the new properties that we believe will be coming onto our new construction and have a Chapter one hundred will be the Delmar Gardens new office building along Highway sixty-four. The Watlow building that is right by Westport Plaza, they had a large addition. We also have the Bungie Corp. The building is being built along sixty-four as well. And then the Monsanto project, which is a multi-year, multi-phase project. Phase three was scheduled to be online the beginning of this year as well. So we're waiting for additional information to see how much of that is actually online then with this current year. As I stated a little bit earlier, our assessed valuation grew by almost eleven percent this year with our preliminary numbers. In reassessment years, which this is a reassessment year, we are given data early on the assessment, new construction numbers. We set a preliminary tax rate, and that goes out then with all the bills that go to our residents and to our commercial landowners. With that, because our assessment grew greater than our Consumer Price Index, it showed a remarkable rollback in our tax rate. Because remember, we don't get to keep our tax rate the same and collect all the revenue of that eleven percent increase. So that reassess, that assessment, though, is not necessarily an indicator that that's going to be the same level of assessment that we will be basing our tax rates on in the fall. I pulled the last two reassessment years, dated compared the preliminary assessment with the assessment value that we actually set our tax rate on. And actually, it was a higher assessed valuation than preliminary number than it was after the war of equalization assessed valuation that was received in the fall. So it can vary. So we're not necessarily counting on it. But here's our projection. And then you can see, after this year, our growth, we have put in the nearly two percent growth each year. So the great news about this is we are almost to the level that we were in two thousand and seven before the market took a dive. So that is exceptional news. But in that time, we've also had a lot of new construction. So it's added property along the way as well. So here I will have the mic over to Brian. He's going to lead you through the rest of the revenues and through the operating expenditures.
Maybe we'll talk a little bit. So as, you know, after everything Patty just explained, to get to our property tax number, you know, roughly four point eight in assessed valuation, ninety-seven percent collection rate, two point one CPI, we're thinking about a hundred and sixty-seven million in property tax. That's, as Patty mentioned, our single largest source of revenue. And the biggest category we have is local. And the next biggest part of our local revenue is Prop C. Some people think that is sales taxes. It's going to enter us by the state considering local revenue. We're estimating roughly nine hundred and eighty-five dollars weighted average daily tenant. Have you heard that? The state gave us a little higher number, but we try to be conservative with our revenue budget because sometimes it tells us it's going to be nine hundred and ninety and then maybe it's five hundred and eighty. So we try to just be conservative with all of our numbers. Student activities is a big chunk, two, three and a half million. That's, you know, even sports, they're collecting money. The drama clubs are collecting money. And that's, that kind of washes right out of the expenses. We almost fully collect for student activities every year, just paying right out the expenses for those same activities. Earnings on, earnings on investment, we're citing a pretty big jump next year. I know dollar-wise, it's not a big jump, but percent-wise it is. And that's because the events have raised interest rates two times down. And I'm raising them again. We're actually getting one point zero one percent on our depository accounts. Last year, this time, I think it was forty-three percent. So our bank contract is ten points over what our federal fund rate is, which is actually pretty aggressive. And we got that, we did think that a few years ago. So not only is our depository account increasing, those six, nine, three months investments are also going up twenty-two. So we're, we try to be, as rest is reasonable, we're trying to get a return on the money. The next biggest source, really the third biggest source is our VST revenue. And that is for the transfer students, or for the students from the city. That, right now, we're projecting small growth this year from, you know, increased enrollment of those students. But in the future, we are predicting a little decline in some of those numbers of students. A way we don't really know how much that's going to drop in the future. But, you know, for now, in the next year, we are expecting a risk increase. The next is other local. We do give a lot of items of that. Merchants and manufacturer tax is about four point two million. That is essentially a property tax on merchant and manufacturer's inventory. It's charged at the same base as the personal property tax, you know, we see on your card. The other big one is the financial institution tax. That's about four point two million we're projecting this year. You know, a couple of years ago, it was four point eight million. But again, that is a source lately. But one, five, six years ago, it was three million, and then it went up. With TD Ameritrade buying Scott Trade, we don't know what the long-term impact on that revenue is going to be. Ask the state for a breakdown of, how much is this four point two million Scott Trade? How much? And they won't give us any type of indication and break it down at all for us. So that is a concern. Another big source of the other local is food service. That's about four million. And then our pilots, the payments of lieu taxes, those Chapter one hundreds. Patty was talking about like Monsanto. We're expecting one million, a little over one million next year, which is a pretty big increase because in the past, we used to get around a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. You know, a big chunk of that is going to be Monsanto, about sixty percent, six hundred thousand. And that's Monsanto, Bungie, Watlow, and just a couple of tips. And one forty-one Manchester. We all rose up to us that one million, but again, the big chunk is Monsanto. And then as we get, you know, to our other revenues, they're still going up, but not quite as big the county at three point four. A big chunk of that, again, is the county stock insurance. And that's around a million dollars. And again, with Scott Trade, you know, considering leaving, that's another source that can deeply stop top of the financial institution tax. You know, our state revenue, there's some grants in there. A big chunk of this is our basic formula. And that's roughly five hundred and forty dollars per rated area that we're expecting next year. Federal, yeah, state transportation as well. And that's a source that has increased again, you know, thinking of all revenue cuts. You know, transportation revenue is decreasing, so that does change our overall power of money flow. On the federal side, that is mostly going to be grants. And then the federal benefits for lunch and breakfast, about two million. A lot of what we see in federal, it's matched very closely in expenses. If we get money for a title grant, that's going to tie directly to how much we pay our title on teachers and the expenses for that. So if that revenue goes up or down, we're going to see our expenses go up or down responding. And the final section we just called, and the biggest chunk of that is the transportation reimbursement. That is, all of that is asset from SSD for us transporting the SSD, SSD students. And much like a grant, that's, you know, our expenses of our bus drivers, fuel, insurance on the SSD drivers. If that goes up, that reimbursement is going to go up. If it goes down, it goes down. So I do like items like that when planning a budget figure. I know that can have that effect of zero on a one balance. Just another way to visualize it is, you can see local is ninety percent of our revenue. Seventy, seventy percent of our overall revenue is property taxes. After that, Prop C is six point six percent. And VST is three point five percent. And after that, nothing really makes up more than one or two percent of our revenue. But two percent of our revenue is a significant sum of money. And then now we'll kind of go into expenses. You know, one of the biggest drivers of our expenses is salary benefits. And that is very closely tied to our enrollment projections. When we first originally built the budget before, you know, when we put this package together, we were looking at seventeen thousand, six hundred and eleven students. Our most recent updated projections that we see late last week is seventy-eight of the numbers. So now we're looking at about seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety students for next year. And as you can see, every year, it's kind of modest, we go on. And you can see the VST numbers are going to decline significantly in twenty-twenty. As you notice, the revenue before is around eight million. That's, we get seven thousand dollars per student. So those drops of a hundred, two hundred will make a big impact on others in the future. But you know, on the flip side, the expenses won't be size of the way we do less students. But, you know, it doesn't correspond directly. So then this is just kind of the history of our enrollment projections. You can see the peak of, it's closer to nineteen thousand. Over and out now, we're pushing it, you know, solely getting closer to eighteen thousand students. So and then here's our staffing increase based on our enrollment growth. This, this year, we need ten additional OD. Next year, we'll be at five additional OD plus a social worker, which will be funded by an increase in tuition from early childhood. And, you know, getting salaries being our biggest thing. And any raise, any raises will have a big impact on that. Fortunately, our teachers' contract, nurses' contract, and CWI kind of gives a known number that we can use the budget for. Last year, this time, we didn't quite know what the future would be from the teachers' contract. This year, we'll be at three point zero nine with the teacher raises. And that's the biggest chunk of our salaries. And we reset for support staff, or two point nine for support staff administrators. Those to be determined, we don't quite know. As you will see, most years, the teachers and the support staff administrators are kind of tied. Our thought is next year that the support staff administrators won't see that three point two three just because the teachers' raise is partially funded by the turnover. You know, we expect to save because there's turnover. But we're not going to see that same level of turnover. We're not supposed to have administrators to afford, you know, four point two. And I know point two percent may not sound like much of a number, but when you're talking salary on our level, that does have a pretty healthy impact. You know, the next biggest component of our expenses are benefits. Our medical plan, unfortunately, right now is expectancy. And so plus, we had two years of all the positive increases to it, of self-fundings. So that means a lot. In prior years, it was going down. So fortunately, right now, we're in an increased place. You know, it's a growing. And then our next biggest benefit cost is our time contributions from PSRS peers. With PSRS, that's all of our certified staff and teachers. We have to pay fourteen and a half percent of the salaries to that. And then all other staff, PSRS will pay six point six percent. So that's, that's a big chunk of money. Unfortunately, it's frozen for next year. We were, last year, this time, we were worried that there was going to be a increase in that. Overall, for benefits like medical, dental, we're expecting a five percent growth. And our other benefit items like the retirement, fighting taxes, that's tied to salaries. You know, like, yeah, four, five percent. And we also have savings looking at next year for fuel and energy. You know, both of those are going down for a while. A lot of our energy savings projects we've taken over, you know, for the last few years, they've been getting, saving a tremendous amount of money every year for those sort of projects. And another one, we're going to save fuels, we're adding ten additional CMG buses. And, you know, the price per, Will has the technical full term for it, but, you know, basically, yeah, the compressed gas, you know, the price per mile on that fuel is just so cheap. Diesel's low right now, but that's even less. And then for your other operating expenditures, for, you know, that's items that we call purchase services, our supplies, we use zero-based budgeting for operations. So, you know, those expenses are really tied to what the needs of the departments they can, in the program and building budgets are, by administrators. You know, each school is kind of given a target they're expected to get based on projected enrollment for that school times a dollar. Around the elementary, get a little less per student. The middle sort of goes up with the high school, maybe the most per student. Many of our program budgets have implemented a comprehensive zero-based budgeting. Doc Marries pushing that across the district in finance. We couldn't have been more like zero-based budgeting. And then here's just kind of a breakdown expense-wise of our budget. So earlier, salaries are our biggest thing. Hundred and forty-nine million roughly, in the fifty-three, you know, approximately for benefits. Purchase services, again, that, you know, it could be items like taxi cash for students in transition. There's a lot of items in purchase services. Supplies and materials, that's things we'll make up, like textbooks and fuel, energy items like that. Student activities, again, if you notice, we hit budget three point five million revenue and we're having three point five million expenses. You know, then we get that total, subtotal of expenses of around two hundred and thirty-six and a half million. But we have an item called anticipated unexpended budget. You know, there's turnover, that we can't play on for budgeting considerably. People have the best attentions, spend their full budgetary in the year. Sometimes that's not possible. You hit marriage, you realize, hey, that item's not going to come in by June thirtieth. So it's not spent, and it's kind of carried forward for next year. And that's another reason why you see such a big drop. And items like supplies and materials in the fall will come back and say, these are the items we did not buy last year. You know, we start off by having to increase the budget for it. So right now, our current year budget is higher than where it is in the next year. You know, we're showing sixteen point eight million, and there might be another million then. But it needs that category of items that just could be spent on the next year. And then our fall budget, you might have tax charges to pay for those items. Didn't, if, you know, we planned on buying it this year, it just didn't come in too well. Like I mentioned earlier, you know, supplies and material includes our fuel and energy savings. Here's kind of a breakdown. It's always interesting to see how big salaries are, you know, sixty-three percent of benefits and twenty-two. And then the other, the smaller charges. Not quite as bad as local, which has that big ninety percent. But then we give the two items, I think, roughly eighty-five percent of our total budget. And we put those revenues and expenditures together. And we also have, you know, that gives us a gain of three point one million. But we also need transfer one point seven million in capital projects to purchase those budgets to do. million capital projects to purchase those budgets, to do, and to, you know, do things like just basic repairs, you know, things that a bond issue's not going to come, we have to put that in the capital projects, but we have to play for those. So once we've got three point one, we make the transfer capital projects, we're looking at ending our fund balance at forty-five, forty-nine million, forty-six million, which will increase our fund balance by that point two five percent as, you know, that was the board policy, that was a, you know, good policy. The nineteen point seven three is really high, I was looking, I think our low point was in 2012, when we were twelve point two million, so, you know, in the last five years, you know, there's been a big effort to bring that back up. Last year helped because we had to open up property taxes, and when we took that, you know, the house, the board was, that's not going to go to expenses, that's going to go directly to the resource fund balance, that helped that really, when you look at the fiscal year sixteen actually, you can see we took that six million and a little more in.
Thank you, Brian. So I want to take some time just to mention some of our ongoing concerns. So of course, as mentioned earlier, the continual protested tax by our taxpayers, and then the settlements, not only by the Board of Equalization, but by also the State Taxing Commission. When they make those settlements, then even though we've received those funds, we need to pay those back, and based on our new protested tax agreement, we're going to have to start accounting for the interest on that and then paying back the interest on those funds as well. As Brian also mentioned, our voluntary transfer students right now, as you know, the program will gradually be discontinuing, so we're still increasing the enrollment for next year in our projections, but we have a gradual decline in the enrollment in our future years, but as each year goes along, we'll be updating that projection to see how conservative or maybe how unconservative we were in that estimate. Keeping constant watch on the Scott Trade acquisition, we've received, as Brian mentioned, both that financial institution tax and the county stock tax from there, those are both crucial, you know, amounts of money that, that combined are around seven million in our budget, that combined with the total in the voluntary transfer tuition, which is another seven million, so combined, that's fourteen million in revenues that potentially we could lose either a big chunk or a portion of. So keeping a very, very constant watch on that is very crucial for us. We're also looking at the ongoing budget issues from the state, while our state revenues on the formula are not material to us, certainly the impact on the transportation funding has an almost immediate impact on us as well. We receive probably twenty percent from the state of our total transportation expenditures. And as Brian mentioned, for our students that are transferred on the SSD buses, we do get full reimbursement from that from the special school district. Most school districts do not have their own buses transporting their students that have special needs, but we are very fortunate to have an agreement that they're able to ride parkway buses and be transported by parkway bus drivers as well. Of course, the legislation, the pending legislation on the charter schools, that'll have potentially an impact on our district if fully implemented without boundaries and without a lot of implications, because potentially, we could be spending some of our local taxpayer dollars that we receive to be sending our children to different charter schools. So it depends on, you know, versions of the bill that are passed, but, you know, that could have a future impact, negative impact for us. Federal funding, you know, with the new administration, we're still truly waiting for additional guidance, not only on what our funding levels will be, but what the programs will essentially be providing, whether or not there's cutbacks in programs or not. So this is why when we budget, we analyze that budget on an ongoing basis, it's not a once and done, it is every month, we're looking at the budget in pretty in-depth by program, et cetera. So one thing that we have to be very careful of, we don't ever want to be too optimistic on our revenues, and we also don't want to be too conservative, we want to try to be middle line and really look at our history to dictate where our future should be. So we need to remain flexible and willing to make some cuts sometimes as we see those revenues potentially dwindling. So we'll be forming, I want to let you know, forming a district budget committee as well, and that's to really enhance our financial awareness with our district stakeholders. That was something that came up as a discussion with our teacher negotiations, but we really believe that that'll be good for the district, just to have stakeholders involved, to know more, be more involved with how the budget is developed and more the review process for the budget. Our five-year forecast, we look into the future, so not only do we look at this current year, how it's going to finish, but we also look into our next year and our future years. So once again, we start with that largest revenue source, and that's our local property tax. So we've put in that two percent growth, or just under two percent growth in local revenues, and then the ninety-seven percent collection rate in order to obtain future numbers for our property tax. We've also estimated a future growth of our proxy revenues of being just, just under one percent in each year. While we doubled the interest rate projection for next year, in those future years, we just show a modest growth for that. Our tuition, of course, for the VST program is gradually decreasing after next year's increase, but as each year goes along, we'll have close attention that's paid to the enrollment number, so we can adjust that future forecast. As Brian mentioned, that other local is growing next year also because of the potential pilot incomes that we will be receiving, so once we get the complete data from St. Los County, we'll update those numbers also. And county revenues have a slight growth in our state-assessed railroad and utilities, but at this point in time, we have our county stock taxes being essentially flat. And as you can see, we just have a slight growth in our federal programs. So then when we look at our expenditures, we're still looking at that salary growth based on our salary estimates, and then our estimates put in for our potential new staff. Our benefits, the same thing, where we're looking at any benefits for our potential new staff, plus that five to four percent annual growth, both salaries and benefits are offset by any potential retirement savings, so retirement or employee changes, and how we calculate that, that savings is based on our last several years of history. This past, or this current year that we're in, sorry, we did have very little retirement turnover that came in with our salary, so if you compare the two salary numbers year over year, you almost have our exact salary increase. Plus, we added ten new staff members this year, so right now, our current estimates are showing that our retirements that have been turned in will, will help us meet our number that we have projected for our retirement savings. So that's a pretty large number, and that is one thing that helps us to sleep at night when we know that we've met some of those savings. So looking at purchase services and supplies, we forecast essentially flat in future years, even though we know we will have some savings with our energy services, so our electric and our gas costs because of the new HVAC equipment that we continually put in with some of our bond funding. But we also know that we're going to have some growth in potentially some of our other expenditures that'll offset that, so that's why essentially we put that in as flat. But combined, we do meet and make our fund balance targets, as you can also see on the same slide, that point two five percent growth each year. We do have to be careful in fiscal years 21 and 22, we will need an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in each of those years in less expenditures in order to completely meet our point two five percent growth. So as we said, as we put it all together, we have our fund balance, and we have our fund balance growth over the past several years and our decline when that transpired in the late 2000s, in 2008 through 2012. They can see our gradual incline of that fund balance percentage. You might want to pay close attention to the red bars and the blue bars, because what we are very concentrated on is making sure that our blue bars are always greater than our red bars, meaning that our revenues need to exceed our expenditures in order for us to meet our targets. One of the first things we do to start building the budget is to really do a deep dive into our revenues, assess them so that we know where our target will be for our expenditure. So we don't start building the expenditure budget first, we build the revenue budget first in order to then come up with our, our orders. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes. What was the question, the jump from fund balance went to twenty-three percent from 22 to 21?
That was just the recap of the expenditures, we actually had a larger growth.
It's just more of a reflection of that kind of compounding of revenues growing slightly faster rate, you know, if they do continue to grow like that, ten, five years, we'll definitely, it's not much higher, but, you know, revenues are solely growing at 1.5, I think, this year, or they just, we got to that year, and there wasn't so much, but I can tell you, if you probably looked at that projection in 2022, we might laugh at it, and the projections does, it's a good way to make sure that our, you know, out-of-pat bar expenses are, you can see our revenue definitely five years down. It's hard to predict, right now, we're comfortable saying expenses are, based on our, our, our.
And one major component in that year in particular is when we're projecting one of the phases of Monsanto's Chapter One, of Chapter 100, to come off of Chapter 100, so we'll have that property come in as new construction, so that's one of the reasons that revenue has grown so much in that year.
Excellent, thank you for that clarification. Another question was enrollment projections, I mean, you've got them, we're taking out several years, is there a magical formula for estimating? I mean, I know there's a lot of.
Let's see if our nutrition is here.
Building growth, I mean, I know there's a lot of buildings, and I know that a lot of people welcome and move in, so what's the magical estimate?
So, Dr. Tyson is our expert, and we are so happy. I can run you down for something.
Thank you. Really, we just use the last four years in our actual enrollment numbers as historical data, and we follow cohort groups through, and really, it's a big, sort of complicated spreadsheet, but what we do is we calculate a cohort survival coefficient, and that kind of shows us whether or not a cohort group over those four years seems to be growing or seems to be declining, and then we apply that to the numbers coming up. So really, that's, and we do monthly projections for our next school year, and then once a year, we do a five-year projection in November. So the five-year projections, you know, I mean, when we're getting up to that four and five years, those are becoming less predictable, less accurate, we do the best we can, but really, the monthly projections for the next school year are some of our more accurate numbers.
So not a magical number of the number of structures that need to be moved out, is that right?
So we know guaranteed housing is definitely going in, then we will apply that coefficient into that attendance area. The difficult part of that is knowing what grade levels the families will have children that move into specific housing, so it could be all high schoolers, it could be everyone where their children have grown, it could be adults where they do not have children yet, or all preschoolers, so it can vary. And we know that that explosion happened a few years ago in the Henry attendance area where all of a sudden, they were all elementary children that, that had moved in. So we're, we're feeling that cohort actually is approaching middle school age, so we are seeing some challenges with space at West Middle currently and in our future years. One thing too, that we are beginning to look at is the possibility of bringing in a demographer to have an enrollment count and maybe a double check on our turnover as far as recreating if some of our subdivisions is happening, so we have a lot of real estate that is changing hands, and newer families and newer residents are moving in, so we're exploring the possibility of maybe doing a deeper dive with an outside firm to look at our projections. Any other questions?
A question I had, I'm having a tough time getting my arm wrapped around, on the expenditures between 2017, well, for 2017 to 2018, it looks like salaries between 2016 and 2017 are current square, and then projected for next year is only going up by about 2.3 percent. We are projecting it to be higher, we're having salary increases, and that all seems to be more than 2.3, so.
Absolutely, so part of that savings is from turnover, so we have about 1.5 million in there as an actual retirement savings that's built in to that number, and we've already reached that target with our, the amount of retirees that we have and an estimated starting salary for their replacements for next year.
And then, look, what about supplies and materials, because it's going down about two million.
So as Brian explained, when we do the revised budget, we actually increase the expenditures each year, we allow the schools and the programs to have what we classify as rollover budgets, so if it was anticipated budget they were going to spend last year, but they ran out of time to spend it, instead of spending it down on maybe purchases they really didn't need, we allow them to roll that into that next year and carry it forward, so it's not in the preliminary budget numbers, but it is in the revised numbers. So when you're looking at the 16, 17 amounts, that is the preliminary budget amount plus the rollover that they're able to carry over. So then when we look at the preliminary and moving forward, it is essentially, when we're looking at the building budgets, it's their per-student allocations that are in there. They can be divided between capital or operating expenditures, so sometimes that's a little bit of the variance as well.
And if you address this, I apologize if I'm asking a question, if you already, but why, why are retirement contributions going to be frozen? Retirement contribution rates are frozen since 2018.
Correct, so they have been frozen for several years, so the PSRS percentage is 14.5 percent, so that is the percentage that we pay as the employer, and that's also the matching that the employee pays and is withheld from their checks, so that's for certified staff members. For support staff members, that percentage is 6.86 percent. So I think it's been for at least the last five years, that contribution level has been frozen, and the reason we use that verbiage in here is last spring, we were kind of given a heads up that, that retirement percentage was going to increase, well, of course, that increases our expenditure as well, so not only just because the increase in the increase in salary, but it's an additional amount for that contribution. But earlier this year, they decided that their investments had grown enough that they were not in desperate need to, to increase that rate yet. That's great, Chris.
I have a quick question, this is not such a big picture question, how are we doing our county sports, repaying them for the scoreboards?
So certainly not at the same level that we were hopeful for. Right now, we receive in about $250,000 a year in the payment of the scoreboard, so we do not have total commitments in order to meet the total cost of the scoreboard yet. Sorry. We have, it's probably around five more years. Currently, it's been over a year since we've received a title level partner. The contracts that we've been receiving lately have been much smaller in nature, 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, and sometimes only one-year contracts, not multiple years, so that certainly has been a struggle, and was not necessarily the production we were, we were kind of promised. So we do meet on a monthly basis, I meet. the production we were, we were kind of promised. So we do meet on a monthly basis. I meet with the representative from Kelly Sports and Mike Rong to look at their potential customers and to see if there's anything like Dr. Marty sends out letters and stuff to with potential partners. So we haven't stopped working on it. It just hasn't necessarily come to fruition yet.
How many more years do we know? Do you know how many more years I should have asked before we have our contract?
With Kelly. We entered into contract in January of 2015. So that, yeah. Any other questions? All of them? I will say, last year, we started our presentation at 10 in the board meeting. So we started around 10 minutes earlier this year.
I never can get my head wrapped around, but you always explain it in such a way that I can even understand. So I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Let's see. 16.0, call for a special meeting. There is none. 17.0, next scheduled closed session. Next, the anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, May 10, 2017. Since 5:00 PM at Central Middle School. Details on the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. 18.0 recess. No closed session. If motion is second to adjourn, regular meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? We hear 7:00. Thank you.